Good evening, everybody. I'll call this special city council, this regular city council meeting to order of April 23rd, 2019. Seeing that there's nobody here for the open forum, I ask everyone to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the approval of the minutes of the special city council work session on April 9th, 2019, and the regular city council meeting of April 9th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting minutes have been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. It is a distinct privilege and pleasure to introduce our new Met Council Representative, Molly Cummings. It's been fun to know Representative Cummings over the last couple of years. She was an excellent mayor for the city of Hopkins, and I'm sure she was sad to resign that post, but we're lucky to have her in her new role. So, we want to say welcome and just invite you to come and address us.
As Councilmember Troutman said, I'm Molly Cummings, and I am the District 5 Representative on the Met Council. District 5 encompasses Hopkins, Edina, Richfield, Bloomington, and Fort Snelling. I'm really excited. I did resign as mayor of Hopkins. I was in my fourth year as mayor, and so I resigned on March 5th and was sworn into the Met Council on March 6th, and am enjoying it very much. I am serving on the Transportation Committee, which of course, especially for Richfield, is hugely important, and I'm learning as much as I can and hope to be as helpful as I can possibly be for the city. I'm also on the Community Development Committee, and that encompasses housing parks, all the things that make our communities wonderful. So, I'm excited about the intersection of those two things. I think that housing and transportation are inextricably combined, and we have to be very mindful and careful as we are growing and make sure that we have affordable housing for everyone, and so I'm looking forward to working on that. I was appointed the Vice Chair to Nora Slawick, who was the former mayor of Maplewood, and so I'm looking forward to that. Of course, you are also lucky because you have Ms. Rodriguez, who has so much experience on the Met Council, years and years and years. Right now, I am learning. I'm really happy to have had the broad background that a mayor has in all of the various aspects because they're so similar to what the Met Council deals with on a larger scale. So, I'm looking forward to being as helpful as I can. You have much going on in Richfield. It's a wonderful city, and there are so many similarities, so many things that we share, Hopkins and Richfield. So, I hope that I can bring some of my knowledge of that city forward, and I'm open and receptive to being helpful in any way that I can, and hope that you will be in touch. We're meeting on Thursday with the city managers of Hopkins, Edina, and Richfield. I did meet with Bloomington; they do there separately. So, anyway, well, I'm very much a person who's based in relationships. I think they're critically important, and I think being present is really, really important. So, anything that I can do, I hope that you will not hesitate to call on me in any way that I can be helpful. So, I'm happy to answer questions if I can. I might have to throw them over to Ms. Rodriguez, but yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Representative Cummings, it's a good thing that you know our city manager, Rodriguez, because, you know, she's, I think that we've come to realize that she does bring a lot of good experience to us, and I hope that you will work closely with her because she's, you know, I think the fact that you both have been or are on the council now, I think is a big plus for the city of Richfield, anyway. And two points I wanted to make. Number one is, in the olden days, when we would meet with our state legislators, we would also invite our Met Council Representative and our County Commissioner to that meeting, and I think that would, I think that would really be a more complete, you know, session if we did that, so I hope you would join us.
I absolutely would. I think that, you know, we, one of the keys of being successful as cities and as a region is working collaboratively, and I think left hand and right hand, talking together and all of us being in the same room is very, very important, so I would absolutely plan to be there.
Good. And then the second point I wanted to make, you know, our last council member, we didn't have much contact with. So, you know, one of the things that, because, you know, Gertrude Ulrich, I don't know if you remember her or not, when she was on the Met Council, she made sure that citizens from whatever community she represented were, knew about all the committees at the Met Council, citizen committees that the Met Council has. And I was in the Minority Issues Advisory Committee, Land Use Advisory Committee, the Chairs Advisory Committee, and another one I don't remember. But, you know, it's really helpful to have, for if you could let us know when there's an opening in such committees, so that maybe we can give you some advice, or Katie can, so that, you know, we can get, we can get some of our people involved, because it's a great experience and a great training, you know, if you want to go on to other offices. But having said all of that, I just want to, I think we're in good hands and welcome, and I hope that Katie and maybe one of our staff people will invite you to Richfield so that you could kind of have a tour of the city and just kind of get to know us, so that we can work well together, and if there's anything that we can do, certainly ask Katie. No, and I bet, I bet it's going to be a good relationship because you already know each other, so that's wonderful.
Thank you for that input. I'm excited to hear that you would be open to hearing about openings, because there are always openings on the various advisory committees, and certainly the Met Council is very dependent on citizen involvement, and so I will absolutely let you know. I would love to come over and take a tour of Richfield. I'm very familiar with the park, however, because we bring our grandchildren here very often over the summer, so, and I know about Multi-Melt, and I'm really a good golfer over there, so I plan to continue that. But yes, I'll definitely know you of any, let you know of any openings that we have, and I would like to just sort of make it a regular practice to attend your meetings. And again, I think that relationships are really important, and I think someone, I think that for Richfield residents, for all of you, for your staff, to know who I am is really critical. So, I will make a point of being here on a timely basis, and whenever there's anything that you think that I can be helpful or report in on, and obviously, I'll be meeting with Ms. Rodriguez on a regular basis, and we'll be exchanging information, but happy to come here anytime and also engage with all of you. So, I'm looking forward to that.
And I'll put in a little commercial for John Stark, because I think he would be a good person to have when you tour Richfield.
Okay.
He would be a good guy, because he's been around for a while now, and he's always busy, and, but he knows the city quite well.
Great.
Thank you.
That's great.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Any other comments from other council members? I'd just like to say thank you so much. Representative Cummings has been absolutely just gracious in reaching out, great communication, very responsive, very collaborative. It's a huge asset to have you as our representative for Richfield, so I want to make sure the Richfield residents who are watching the council meeting and involved know we are in great hands working with you, and you've been nothing but extremely collaborative and transparent and open with us, so I really appreciate that from you. So, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I look forward to working with you as well.
Welcome.
Now, the next item is, let's see, proclamation observing Earth Day, Arbor Day, and Arbor Month, and I will invite Rachel to come up, and then I will read the proclamation. Rachel, do you have anything to share, or do you want me to just read?
Would you like me to talk before or after?
Before.
Okay, sure. I would just like to say a quick thank you to all staff, present and not, who came out to our cleanup today at Veterans Park. It was a really great turnout. I think we had about 45 staff, council members, commission members, and got a lot cleaned up there at Vets, and had a great time doing it. So, thanks especially to Mayor Regan Gonzalez, Councilmember Wayland, all the staff present that were there, and everyone else. It was a great time.
Can you say what the weirdest thing was that you felt?
We were kind of like compiling a top-five list. We found a tire, I believe, John. Did you find the tire? Yeah. Joe Clark, a city forester, found a fire extinguisher, and I think we also found an old piece of playground equipment somewhere, so it's separated, obviously, from the playground set, but lots of just regular, you know, Easter leftovers, too, so.
Great. And I just, I'm on the Organics Task Force with Rachel, and I would just say, I really appreciate the work that you do for the city. How long have you been with us now?
Since the very end of September, so I don't want to count.
It seems longer than that, but I feel like you've been able to do so many great things around just helping the city be more sustainable, more green, looking at being more efficient, and I really appreciate the work that you've done. It's been fun to be a part of that.
Yeah, it's been, it's been fun for me to work with staff as well as residents who really supported not only our organics drop-off program, which has almost 700 households signed up, not even residents, so, you know, average size is multiple people in a household, so that's been really exciting, and supporting recycling initiatives and, you know, things like that. So, sustainability in Richfield is strong and improving, and that's an exciting thing to be a part of, so thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Now, I will come up and read this. So, this is our Earth Day proclamation. Whereas Earth Day was celebrated nationwide on Monday, April 22nd, to bring awareness to the need to care for the environment, and whereas Arbor Day is celebrated nationwide on Friday, April 26th, Arbor Month is celebrated in Minnesota during the month of May to promote the value in planting of trees, and whereas Richfield's Forestry Division participates in the Tree City USA program to promote efforts to preserve, maintain, and manage the health of Richfield's urban forests, and whereas the Richfield has successfully implemented an organic drop-off program that lowers the city's environmental footprint and contributes to the city's overall actions of stewardship, and whereas the community of Richfield is encouraged to participate in park cleanup efforts in April and May, as well as year-round to demonstrate good stewardship of our green spaces and natural resources, and whereas Earth Day and Arbor Day will be celebrated by the city of Richfield at Wood Lake Nature Center on Sunday, April 28th, with tree plantings and invasive species removals, and whereas trees and forests produce clean air, naturally filtered groundwater, provide a setting that reduces stress, and improves the mental health, reduces exposure to sun's UV rays, and provide a home for many animal species. Now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, Mayor of the city of Richfield, do proclaim the city of Richfield observes Earth Day, Arbor Day, and Arbor Month as a way of promoting environmental stewardship and mindfulness, mindful choices to preserve our natural habitats. Thank you very much. And since you're up here, can you, do you have the details of the event on the 28th?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
So, the event on the 28th at Wood Lake is their Earth Day celebration, and I believe it is from 1:00 to 4:00, I think. And they're basically pulling buckthorn, kind of restoring the habitats around at Wood Lake, and also picking up litter off trails and, you know, around the center.
April 28th at Wood?
Mm-hmm. It's more of an open house. It's not, you don't have to go from 1:00 and stay until 4:00 kind of thing. But yeah, check out the city website for more information. You can also sign up for the organics.
Yes, and I think Jared wants to take a picture.
And Mayor, when you're coming up, let me make, Rachel, I just wanted to let you know that I've heard from people that serve on the committee about you.
Uh-oh.
And they, and they have been very happy that you really, really work hard, and that you do your very best, and they are, they were thanking me for you.
And she took all the credit.
But I know, I know that Jim Tofsonhofer, you know, yeah, that, so, I want you to know that you're appreciated, and thank you so much for your dedicated service.
Thank you, Rachel. All right, the next item is hats off to hometown hits. I don't remember where I start, so I'm going to just go with Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I wanted to lift up, we have many great schools in Richfield, but one that I think often gets a little overlooked is the South Education Center, and I had a chance to go with one of the youth from my church, actually, and see their art fair this past week, and was just hugely impressed by the art that they're putting out, and just the environment they have there, the supports they offer students, just the dedication of the staff there was quite amazing, so that was wonderful to see. Also, Rachel mentioned the park cleanup today with staff. Just wanted to continue to thank all of the other groups that are doing park cleanups already, some that are doing some this weekend. I know a couple different groups I'm connected with, they're doing Taft Park and Christian Park on Saturday, and then the other Sunday one, so thank you to everyone who's participating in that. And then the final thing, I just want to put out a shameless plug for my, I started a Word 3 newsletter, just a monthly email newsletter. If anyone would like to sign up to get updates, you can talk to me or send me your email. Happy to sign you up, but just in an effort to keep residents more in the loop on what's happening and increase that transparency. So, yeah, that's what I got today.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. I received a call last week from one of our elders in the community, and she asked that I would publicize the senior citizens' property tax deferral program that the Minnesota Department of Revenue has, because I know there are sometimes people that are struggling to pay their property taxes. So, senior citizens who cannot pay for their property taxes may qualify for the senior citizen property tax referral, deferral program, and it's through the Minnesota Department of Revenue. To qualify, all of the following must be true. You have to be 65 years or older, or if you're married, one of you is 65 or older and the other is at least 62. Your household income is $60,000 or less. You have lived in, owned your home, or had it homesteaded for the last 15 years. Other liens against your property are less than 75% of the estimated market value, and you do not have a reverse mortgage, a life estate, or any state or federal liens on your property. So, if you enroll, the amount of property tax you pay is limited to 3% of your total household income, and this limit applies as long as you participate in the program. The state of Minnesota temporarily pays your property tax above, that's above that amount on your behalf, and that's a loan from the state to you, and then you repay the deferred property tax plus the interest, and you may take your individual and property tax refunds or other payments and apply them to the loan. But this citizen was really concerned that there are a lot of people that are feeling pressure when they're trying to pay off their property tax on a fixed income, and she wanted to make sure that we publicized this, so I'm passing it along on her behalf.
Thank you.
And then I had a couple of other events. I went over to the Wellness Fair.
Commissioner Supple, could I just interrupt, because I think that's such a great program. Would it be possible for staff to put that on our website, where, at a place where people have housing questions? Because I think that comes up a lot, and I'll certainly be referring folks to that site, but I just think that's such a great idea.
Councilmember Troutman, I was just sending myself a note to remind myself to ask people. Oh, thank you.
Sorry, Councilmember.
No problem.
Thank you. Good idea.
So, at the Wellness Expo, there were a number of events that were being promoted, and I just wanted to share a few of them, and I'm doing it in chronological order here. One is the upcoming Unity in the Community Cinco de Mayo Festival that's going to be happening. There's free food, music, dances, games, and resources, and more, and it's a joint community police partnership. That's Sunday, May 5th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Veterans Park, and so I know that's been a great event in the past. Another organization is MIRA, and they were promoting their fourth Latina Women's Fair in Richfield. It takes place at House of Prayer Lutheran Church, and it's on Friday, May 10th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and they say to come and enjoy an evening dedicated to you, accompanied by other fantastic women, and they will provide free childcare. Okay, that was.
Can you give those times again?
Friday, May 10th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it's being hosted by House of Prayer Lutheran Church, and it's, the organization that's doing that is MIRA.
Okay.
Okay, another one that got promoted at the Wellness Expo is the 2019 Richfield Garden Club Plant and Gardener's Garage Sale. So, Saturday, May 18th, and Sunday, May 19th. They're going to be at the Richfield History Center Bartholomew House on 69th and Lyndale, and they'll have hearty perennials, annuals, vegetables, herbs, and hanging baskets. So, come and check that out from the garden club. And the last one is the annual South of the River Powwow. It's put together by the South Metro Indian Education Committee, and what I thought was really exciting about this is it features a lot of Richfield dancers. So, one of the head dancers is a student at the Richfield Public Schools. So, that is happening at Burnsville High School on May 18th, 2019. The doors open at 11:00 a.m., the grand entry is at 1:00 p.m., the feast is at 5:00 p.m., and then there's another grand entry at 7:00 p.m. It's honoring graduating seniors, there's a free lacrosse event for the youth, and the feast is free. And like I said, we have a lot of Richfield dancers at this, so please, the South Metro Indian Education Committee asks us to please join them at the annual South of the River Powwow on May 18th. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Okay, this, on Saturday, April the 27th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m., the Richfield Police will be taking drugs back. So, if you've got any drugs at home, prescription medication that you were given and you didn't finish your prescription, or if you have any old aspirin that have expired, or any vitamins, or any, anything that, that has, that has, you know, a drug signature to it, then I would suggest if you come to Richfield City Hall, they'll have a big bin, and you just drop your medications or whatever in there, and, and I do that every time, and, you know, you could do it probably two or three times in a year, but that's going to be the April the 27th, Saturday, here at City Hall, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. And then I've got, last night, I attended Trail, the, the folks that give rides to some folks that have disabilities, and they take them to all kinds of services, whether it's city services, programming, community events, you know, you name it, and, and they go bowling, they, they do all kinds of things, and it's such a, it was such a beautiful little gathering, and, and I was really, really impressed. The riders were real friendly, I mean, they just, they'd come, come up there and they'd say, "Well, your shoes are untied." And I said, "I don't have shoelaces." They said, "Oh, you don't?" Ha, 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 ha. So, you know, I appreciated little, little jokes like that, because it kind of makes me feel like, you know, at least they acknowledged me, that, and were very cordial and fun. The other thing I want to mention about Trail is, we, they are awarded money from our Social Services Committee, and, and they, they submit a proposal that's very well-done, very clean, very, a lot of clarity, and just super, super well-done. Not only that, but I was impressed last night, because the event started at 7:00, it ended at 8:30, and it was beautifully done, very efficient. So, I'm, I'm just impressed that, you know, they have on their board a directors, they have, they have somebody, someone from Arlie in Richfield, they have, they have other members that participate, but they also have riders, and the riders are, you know, they really appreciate being on the board because it's their board, it's their organization. So, it's very impressive, and they, they gave me this for the city, and they said, you know, "It's not much, but it's a thought that counts," and they were very appreciative of the city. They couldn't say enough good things about Richfield, how Richfield was always there for them, because most, a lot of the clients that they have, they're housed at the Fraser Sherid and Court, and, and a number of them were there. We took pictures, and so hopefully Neil will place them on our Facebook. But let me read you what it says. It's a Trailblazer Award. This is the third award that they've given out, and we're the first city to get it, and we're the, we really participate more than any other community in terms of supporting this group, and, and it's a well-deserved award, I think, because in recognition of its passion and commitment to supporting the independent spirit of Trail riders and Arlie participants presented to the city of Richfield on April the 22nd, 2019, and it's, and I'll put it right here, maybe they, maybe they can focus the camera, and it is, "To the city from the Trail Board." And I, and the Trail Board really appreciates us, and let me tell you that our Community Services Committee, we, it's, it's made up of two staff people, and Lynette Chambers, I think, does the bulk of the, of the work, and she's incredible. And then we have two citizens, and that includes Mary Olufsen and Camilo DeSantis, and Camilo is, you know, used to work for, oh, what was that called? I don't remember what it was called. Good, not the Goodwill. What was that organization that parceled out money in downtown? I can't remember. Well, anyway, but that's, so Camilo has a strong background in terms of social services, and then I'm the liaison to the committee, and we get, I don't know, we get maybe 10, 12 proposals, and we really go through them all, and we're really grateful that we're able to help and participate in, in the good things that people do for other people, and these are folks that are really in need of money, and we keep them going, and we help them out, and we're, we're proud of that, and I will give this to Jared, and I- And I will give this to Jared, and I don't know, I would suggest that we, that Lynette Chambers around her area, that it'd be displayed there, because she's such a valuable member. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of announcements. One, I believe tomorrow is the last day, so if you're seeing this on YouTube, it's going to be posted today. Today, folks, is the last day to register for the Friends of Wood Lake banquet, which is this Friday. And I just want to invite you guys, this is a great time. The weather is great, might be getting a little colder, but it's a beautiful dinner. You'll be able to connect with a lot of neighbors, and Wood Lake Nature Center is the crown jewel of Richfield. This is a great way to have a great evening and support on a tremendous community asset. And another way to do that is with our internships, our Summer Naturalist Internship Program. So, we're taking applications for summer internships. There is a paid and an unpaid internship. And so, if you, if you love the sciences, and you love biology, and you love Richfield, there's, if you think of those as overlapping Venn diagrams, there's, if you find yourself in the middle of all that, we would love to have you participate with Wood Lake. And then, the last hats off is for a group that I became aware of just this past week called Sheridan Story. And it's a group, it started with a church over northeast that were renting from a school, and they started to discover that kids were trying to hoard food, or take extra food home for the weekends, try and make it through the weekend, and so they started to meet that need, and they started a non-sectarian organization that provides food for kids throughout the Twin Cities, but also in Richfield. And so, I wanted to give my hat. They partner with Veep, which is another great organization. But I did find out that one school they're not in yet is Sheridan Hills, where I went to school, and they need volunteers, and they need some resources, so we're going to do that. They're ready to partner with us, and I just, it's unacceptable that we have kids in Richfield that are hungry. And so, I want to take my hats off to Sheridan Story for what they're doing, but just say, if you're, if you're a church or small business over on the west side, you're going to be hearing from me. And I just want to, if you guys hear this and you want to participate, please contact me, but hats off to them, and we can, we can do more in Richfield. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. I have three items. So, last weekend, I was able to attend, and actually Councilmember Garcia and Councilmember Supple were there as well, the League of Women Voters Annual Meeting. We had it out, held to have on Mexican Grill, and we had great turnout. I don't know if it was 25 or 30 folks, but it was excellent turnout. And I just want to remind folks about the League. The League is a great organization in Richfield that is for men and women to help, you know, keep our citizens and residents engaged and civically minded and focused on making sure, you know, we're building pipelines for positions on our boards, commissions, councils, but also keeping residents up to speed on our most pressing issues that we're facing here in Richfield, and also making sure we're doing things like registering our youth to vote as well in Richfield. They go and volunteer at a lot of youth events to register our youth to vote. They go to the citizenship ceremonies as well and register folks to vote there. So, the League is just one of those organizations that's been around in Richfield for a very long time, and is extremely important to the success of our community. And I personally just feel very grateful that we have the League. There's so many women who are, who are community builders that are a part of the League, and it's just great to be able to connect with them, to have, and to learn from them. So, the next meeting is on May 18th, which is Saturday. I believe it's at 9:45. I don't know if we have the location yet, but you can email Maureen if you'd like to go to that next meeting. And the meeting will focus on getting more information on the Orange Line that will be coming to Richfield. And her email is M.A.S.C.A.G.L.I.A@comcast.net. And it's just a great organization, and it'd be a great organization for families to get involved in together. But I just wanted to say thank you to the League. They had a great annual meeting, and share their upcoming, their upcoming session. And they just voted at their annual meeting that they'll be focusing on doing a research project. They do research projects on a somewhat regular basis, and the topic of the project this year is investigating what mental health resources are out there for our Richfield youth. So, I'll be looking forward to hearing and learning more about that. The next item I have is Open Streets at Penn Fest is coming. It's not until September 15th, and it goes from 1:00 to 5:00, but right now, they are taking, they are taking applications for businesses, organizations, and community groups who want to have a stand at Richfield's Penn Fest. So, Penn Fest is a way to get community members out on our commercial district of Penn Avenue, connected to our local businesses, connected to their neighbors, and also getting folks out and physically active, and doing fun activities as a community. So, you can go to the City of Richfield's website and find more information about how to sign up your organization for Penn Fest. But though, that is opening, that's open right now. And the last item is, the Richfield School District is looking for donations for their 2019 Richfield Senior Class Annual Graduation Party for their seniors. And this will be the 50th Annual Senior Party, so it's a big one. And it's so awesome to hear that they've been doing this for seniors for 50 years. So, this is just a fun, free, actually, I think they have to pay, but it includes food, entertainment, casino, DJ, photo booth for the youth. But it's a way for the high school seniors to kind of have a time together that's safe, controlled, alcohol-free, where they have a lot of activities scheduled to connect with one another, and they'll have a lot of fun things that night. But one of the things they're looking for is financial support and other types of contributions and donations, so to help defray the cost of the event itself, but also, they're looking for gift certificates that they can raffle off. They're also looking for age-appropriate items that they can raffle. So, think about it. What do seniors need? They're graduating from school, from high school. Almost every senior might need an Instapot, leaving their home, or something else, but many of them will be off to college, or they'll be living independently, so what are, what are those things that we can help seniors with, and the school can raffle off? So, they'll be taking donations till May 31st, so we have a little more than a month, but this is a great way to contribute to the youth in our community and help support a healthy, positive environment for our seniors. And the co-chairs of the senior party are Christine Malneck on our school board, and Tina Lavine. And I will just give you their emails. If you want to donate, you can contact them. So, Tina's email is P.E.T.I.N.A.LAVIN@gmail.com, and she was, she was the main contact for this request. So, please contact Tina, please consider pitching in and donating, and I would make a specific ask to the council members. If you guys would each like to donate, that would be greatly appreciated, and I will be following up with everybody. But that's another great opportunity that as a, as a community, we can get together and support. And lastly, I just want to say thanks to all the staff, the commission, the commissioners, and the council members, and folks that came out to the park cleanup today, that was great, and to all the community groups, as Councilmember Wayland said, that have been coming out and picking up our parks. So, thank you very much for that. The next item is the approval of our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. And the next item goes to Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent calendar contains-
City manager, you're not a council member, sorry. I said council member, Rodriguez, sorry about that. City manager.
Well, there was a lot of talk about Met Council today, and I was a council member on Met Council, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. Item A, consider adoption of a resolution modifying a healthcare savings plan for International Association of Firefighters, IAUP, local 1215 bargaining unit employees. Item B, consider approval of a bid tabulation and award of a contract to Corrective Asphalt Materials LLC for the 2019 Malteen Pavement Rejuvenation Project in the amount of $436,580, and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes under $175,000 without further city council consideration. Item C, consider approval of a proposal from Bolton &amp; Menk to provide construction engineering services for the Lyndale Avenue Reconstruction Project for a fee not to exceed $818,606. And I submit these three items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments from council?
I have two comments, actually. I was really pleased to see the healthcare savings plan, because that's a great option for post-retirement healthcare, so it's always good to see people participating in that. And also, then on item C, when I was looking over the information about Bolton &amp; Menk, I really liked the quality control that was in there to make sure that we're doing good quality work when we're putting in and reconstructing the roads, and that they have a number of safeguards there for the citizens.
Thank you, councilmember. Any additional comments? Oh, Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, I appreciate the good work and the collaborative spirit between our city and the unions, and I'm happy, as Councilmember Supple said, that we, they're working on this healthcare savings plan. And then I also, in addition to the quality control, have been really impressed with the community engagement efforts of Bolton &amp; Menk, and the way that they've made sure to continue communicating with, with the neighbors and the community as a whole, so I'm excited to see that they will be part of another leg of the project.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. This item is consideration of adoption of revisions to the inclusionary housing policy with regards to housing and redevelopment authority scattered site programs. In February, the HRA discussed the application of the inclusionary housing policy to its scattered site housing programs. Commissioners determined that developments involving rehabilitation and long-term affordability meet the intent of the policy. In the case of this policy, long-term affordability would need to be demonstrated through a land trust deed, a mortgage restriction, or other enforceable document requiring affordability. Historically, the HRA's new home program has involved both new construction and rehabilitation of existing housing, and the focus on one or the other has been flexible depending on market conditions and where the greatest need is. So, the revised policy was approved by the HRA on April 15th, and we're considering it tonight, and the only substantive change is to subdivision four. Did staff have anything else they wanted to add?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, no, I think that that covers everything. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from councilmembers?
All right, then I will move that we adopt a revised inclusionary housing policy, clarifying language relating to the housing and redevelopment authorities scattered site housing programs.
I'll second.
And before, I just want to make one comment. I made this at the HRA meeting, but I think this makes a lot of sense. Making a tweak to our inclusionary housing to keep into consideration, to take into consideration, not new construction that's affordable, but not only that, but also keeping, you know, making improvements to the existing housing we have, and keeping that affordable over the long term meets the goals of, of what we were trying to do with that. So, it makes a lot of sense, and I think it's a really great addition. Go ahead, councilmember.
One thing I wanted to mention, during the HRA discussion, Commissioner Elliott talked about a section that's not being revised, but he wanted to draw to people's attention, and that was the non-housing development projects that receive a financial assistance from the HRA, the EDA, or the city, which might cause a loss in affordable housing. And it talks about what we're going to do to either replace that or mitigate that. And with the, along the Cedar Corridor and some of the redevelopment plans, that might be something that actually will be happening, because we do have a lot of naturally occurring affordable housing there, and so we need to have something to do, you know, a plan for how this works, and that's included in this policy. So, he wanted to draw people's attention to that.
Thank you. Any other comments, Councilmember Wayland?
Yeah, I would echo what the mayor said, that I think, I think it makes absolute sense to include, to prioritize, and to put funding toward these rehab projects, especially given the current market. That's a good use of limited funds. I want to thank the HRA for their continued work to keep updating this, and their approach and staffs, that this is a kind of a working document, that as the context changes, as the need changes, as our knowledge of options to better use it changes, that we continue to update and strengthen it. So, I'm excited to continue that work in the years to come.
And I wanted to also acknowledge Mr. Stark, who's really, you know, it's been quite a challenge, you know, with, with all of this pressure about housing, not only here in Richfield, but, you know, in the whole region. And you've been able to pull things together, and you've been able to really work hard, I think, with not only, you know, the inclusionary housing and all of this, but with existing housing that's going on, that is around, and the challenges that happen, you know, that we have to respond to. So, just wanted to let you know that, you know, all your efforts are appreciated, and we're lucky to have you.
Well, thank you. And, you know, we've, we've been talking about this to a greater extent over the last maybe two years, and it's very helpful that staff and policymakers are really on the same page on all of these things. It makes it a lot easier to accomplish these things, so, thank you.
Well, I know you kind of have a lot to do with, you know, with all of your responsibilities, you know, with the HRA, and then with the development, and then existing, ongoing little challenges, and I prefer to call them challenges instead of problems. And so, really, when you stop to think about the hat you wear, you know, you, you wear more than one hat, and when you go out different places, you have to change hats, so, and you do a good job in doing that.
Well, thank you. And I just want to reiterate what Councilperson Wayland said, that, you know, these are living documents, and, you know, I think that the, the cost of housing is just going up so incredibly fast, and obviously wages are not to that same degree. And, you know, we're just going to have to keep watching this and looking for ways we can keep on top of the situation to the greatest degree that we in, you know, the city can, but probably as importantly, advocating to people in St. Paul and people in Washington, DC to take more action as well.
Any other comments?
I was just going to say, there's not much I could add to what my colleague said. I'm really supportive of this, this policy, but I just wanted to highlight, just, there's no silver bullet for affordable housing, but including homeownership as part of the housing, affordable housing solution is, is, I think, I think really important. And housing, land trusts, housing trusts, those, those are really a powerful tool, and I hope in our city, we continue to have more and more of those opportunities for, for families, and so I'm grateful for this, and really appreciate it.
Great. Well, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you very much. The next item is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything to report tonight.
Thank you very much. And the last item is Claims and Payroll, and that always goes to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, for trusting me to, with this item. I appreciate it, and I know that Councilmember Mary Supple appreciates it too. So, I will move Claims and Payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and Payroll has been passed. And with that, we adjourn our meeting.